I call this work session meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. It is Tuesday, March 5th of 2023. The time is 3:01. Ms. Cordova, would you call the roll?
Mr. Prather. Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza. Mayor Houston.
I'm here.
Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
Coram Press and Mayor.
Okay, and the first item on our agenda is always citizen comment time period, but I'm told that we did not have anyone sign up. So we will go straight into presentations and item one.
Receive a staff presentation and hold discussion regarding the city's contract with Green Guy Recycling in preparation for an upcoming consideration of contract extension and provide direction to staff.
Ms. Reyes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today's first presentation is in regard to the second five-year extension of the Green Guy Recycling contract. The first contract with Green Guy Recycling was approved in 2009. After going out to bid when all extensions were utilized, Green Guy Recycling also won the 2014 bid. In 2019, the first five-year extension was approved. Green Guy has been an amazing partner with the city throughout the years. Working together, we have monitored the needs of the community and added hard and added a lot to, uh, to added recycle items in the contract. We look forward to Council's direction on the proposed five-year extension. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Temides, Community Enhancement Initiatives Manager. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor Houston. Amy Temides, Community Enhancement Initiatives Manager for the City of San Marcos. Just to review, we're going to be going over the five-year extension and some background and then what we might be looking for for the next five-year extension. So in 2009, as Ms. Reyes said, we did our first contract with Green Guy and the city provides a lot of services. It's a 24-hour drop-off. They do the recycling for city facilities. So the reason why we went with Green Guy is because they could tailor what we needed with our recycling with the city operations. At the time, we needed the contractor to come into the facilities and pick up everything. Now we have kind of changed this to where everything is out in the dumpster enclosure, but in the beginning, that's what we needed them to do and they were the contractor who could do that for us. They also are the special events for us and that includes where we would have trash and compost now that we've added, but things like the library as well. They are the only one that the library uses, so they recycle all of their books whenever they do their library book sale. So they do special events like that. They also had a CPI annual increase. And then in 2010, we added the household hazardous waste. They do the employment. There are employees, two employees twice a week. And that is actually paid for now through Habitat Conservation Plan, most of it is. But when we decided to do an HHW permanent facility open twice a week, we hired out. We did not have employees with the city. And in 2011, we added multifamily recycling with our contractor, TDS, on onsite, but we added things that then the multifamily residents could go and use, which is the 24/7 drop-off, all the extra things that ended up being included into the next set of additions into the contract the second time. So in 2014, we went out to bid and Green Guy wanted again. I will tell you, they were the only bid because really they are very special to what our community needs. In 2015, we added tires to the contract because they were getting a lot of illegal dumping of tires at their facility, but also seeing it around town. And then we added things like free-on appliances. So our residents currently can do a free-on appliance for bulk pickup, but they have to make sure it's certified free-on free. Here, they can take it to Green Guy and they will actually have a company come out and take the free-on out. So it's something that our residents don't have to worry about when they have a refrigerator, mini-fridge or whatever like that. CTR screens, TVs, they have, while those can go in bulk pickup, we really don't want those to go to the landfill due to the hazardous chemicals that are in there. And then the tires are limited to five passenger tires and it has to be passenger tires because that's what a normal household would have, not 18-wheeler tires or big tractor tires, which we do see as well. And then also, we have the 40 acres where our techs pick up illegal dumping. We're actually given 450 tires per year with them to be able to pick up and put in there that they don't charge us. In 2017, we added nuisance vehicles because code compliance was having an issue with nuisance vehicles on private property and it's a $75 charge. I don't think that really has gone up, that they're able to utilize that if they have a clear title or have a title to it. And then 2019, we did the first five-year extension and did a flat rate increase. The CPI was going crazy at the time and we just wanted to do consistency, including like we did with our TDS contract. It used to be CPI and it went to a flat rate of 3%. So this gave stability in how we are budgeting our, um, our contract and for our purposes. So that's why we did a flat rate, a flat rate increase. Our current rate is a whole, I think that's 85 cents to TD, to Green Guy. It includes all that stuff you see that they do, plus a community cleanup where they provide two 40-yard roll-offs for recyclables, which is going to be scrap metal, appliances and electronics, and a cage trailer for tires and TVs and car batteries. And it's just amazing, the service that they provide for 85 cents a month to our residents. So that is residential and multifamily. So we recommend to do the second five-year extension from July 1st, 2024 to September 30th, 2029. And what we want to do is align this with our fiscal year. It really becomes an issue in budgeting when we're looking at customer counts because that is how our budget is created, by the number of people we expect to have with multifamily and residential. And then doing the flat rate, the flat rate from 2.5 to 3% because they are seeing some increases. It's 0.5, it puts it in line with, um, TDS and it's kind of, I believe the average of what is then an increase and they need that to cover some other costs, which will help with increases in tire disposal and things like that. And then they want to add, we've been working really, really hard with them. This is an issue we have around town is mattresses and box springs. Now, our residents currently can use them in a bulk pickup, but they get four, three cubic yards per year. A mattress is a bulk pickup. And we have residences, single-family residents that have multiple homes or multiple bedrooms and they might be getting rid of multiple mattresses and box springs. This would be an extra dollar added to the rate, but they can bring a mattress and a box spring to Green Guy. They are recycling the items, so they are deconstructing these and recycling material. They are also cheaper if somebody wanted to take it to them, just as an FYI. TDS has a landfill and Waste Management has a landfill and they're about $40, $45 to drop off. Their drop-off is $35 per item. So this is an economies of scale that if everybody paid the dollar a month, it helps not just single-family, but multifamily residents to go and dispose of mattresses and box springs. So we'd really like to see that. Plus, we'll be able to use them for our drop-off when we're picking up the illegal dumping around town. They'll give us a certain number for free. So are we, we're looking for Council direction on all of that stuff.
Okay. Are there any questions to begin with? I'll be asking these four questions and I'll be going around the table on those. Go ahead.
And this is probably already answers itself, but you know how they have big trucks these days with these monster tires on it? Is that considered?
A passenger tire? No.
Okay, so that would be different. Also, how are we doing on the recycling of downtown boxes and all that stuff?
So that is a future project that I'm working on with Josie to look at businesses and all of that stuff. The city does not mandate that businesses recycle. We have it in our ordinance that they have to provide equal space in their enclosure for trash and recycling for new builds, but downtown is not a new build except for any new buildings that they get done. But that is something that Josie Fletta and I are working on to look at as a pilot in one of the alleys, to look at a, an enclosure that would have trash recycled cardboard separated from regular recycled compost and grease trap. But that's going to take some time to get to, but it's, because it's going to, we're going to have to really look at that. But that is something we are looking at.
Thank you.
It does not stop any business from using anybody to recycle those items, though.
Yeah. And for the cardboard, there'd be that opening that's?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So it doesn't get contaminated as easily.
Right. Other questions? About the mattress, you said something about a dollar. Are we adding a dollar? Are we going from 85 cents to a dollar?
A dollar eighty-five. We are adding a dollar.
In order to do the mattresses and box springs?
Yes, ma'am.
So everybody would be paying the dollar?
A month, yes, ma'am.
But then everybody doesn't have to look at mattresses and box springs where they're dumped?
We can let them know that there is a viable resource for them to go and dispose, especially multifamily. They don't have this and their apartment management is not managing that at all.
Other questions? Okay. Um, I'm, I'm so thrilled to see all the additional things that they are taking that they used to not take. And I know with population growth, it's hard to tell this, but are we seeing less of this stuff in the river cleanups since they have started taking? I know that's really an unfair question, but?
Yeah. So we had the river cleanup this past weekend.
Yep.
Yay! We filled up two 20-yard roll-offs of trash at the, um, the Pauline Espinoza Community Hall where everybody brings everything. And then a cage trailer, we picked up, we are finding some new hotspots for people to illegal dump. So we picked up about 20 tires in this one spot right next to the Blanco River. We also, yeah, I know, right? We put a 20-yard roll-off at Jack's Roadhouse and picked up an old illegal dump. So we had two third, about just over half of that roll-off, 20-yard roll-off is metal and then the rest is scrap lumber. So, but I had all the other watershed leaders who had been working this for 10 years and some of them say this is the least amount of trash they've ever seen. So some things are working, but then we also go out and look for hidden things. And so I'd like to say, yes, it's getting better, but we're also looking for wherever people might be going and doing a hotspot drop-off.
Yeah. Okay. Do they keep track of computer monitors, TVs, all that?
Yes.
How do, what timeframe do they use? Do they use a calendar year? Do they just have it monthly?
Yes.
They could give it to us by fiscal year?
I, I actually get a commodity report every month on what they are collecting and I'm happy to give you the past however many years you want of what is collected.
I think maybe just pick a timeframe, but a year's worth and, and send that to us because that's stuff that wasn't being picked up before and was either, and I guess some of that's still going to the landfill, but, uh, but it's going in a better way and it's getting cleared out. I'm thrilled to hear about that they'll do the free-on part because I know that's kept some people.
Yeah.
They, for, for me, when the repairman comes and says, this is not fixable, and I say, well, you're here, would you do that?
Yeah.
But sometimes when the refrigerator's just dead and it's, you know, 15 years old, you don't call anybody, then you're stuck with it and it's got the free-on in it. So that's good to know.
And we do answer those questions a lot when people call us and it is on that service calendar that we mail out annually, everything that Green Guy takes and it is on our website.
Right.
So we, and we do bump those things up on, keep San Marcos Beautiful Facebook page as well. But I'll give you the commodity report for the last five years. It's real easy to?
That, that would be great. And, uh, yeah, I have that stuck to the side of my refrigerator because I've got, will they take this? And, you know, the answer is more often yes now.
Exactly.
So yes, this, this is great. And, um, I assume that heaven forbid we have another flood, et cetera. They'll be there with the trucks or the roll-off to take the recyclables and the metal like they did the last time.
Yes, exactly. So at the beginning of 2015, May 2015, for this first 10 days, they worked it. After we got our contractor for the debris removal, they actually subcontracted with Green Guy to take all of the white goods and a lot of the recycling as well, metal recycling.
Yeah, okay. All right, Council, I will go around and find out how you feel about the, having a second year, second five-year extension? If you're good with that?
I'm good.
Just let me know. I'm seeing yes from Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm seeing yeses over here. And I'm a yes also. And this one seems to be a no-brainer. I'm thinking, why did we wait so long? Is to align that contract to a fiscal year. So whatever we have to take to, to make that happen. Are y'all good with that one too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we're good with that. Uh, are you good with the annual contract increase, increasing from 2.5% to 3%, which would be for the five years, the life of this upcoming contract?
Yes, each year would be five years, 3%. Yes.
Y'all good with that? We're, we'll let the record show, everyone's nodding. And so now we have the mattress and box springs. To add that to the contract, it's going to more than double the cost. But hey, look what we're getting for 85 cents.
Exactly.
My only concern about this is, and it just, it seems like we are just cleaning up the mess for apartment complexes that should be taking responsibility for this. You know, if the issue's coming up that most of these box springs come from complexes, well then why aren't they doing their job? Lord knows they're charging enough for rent.
Is that where, you, you kind of addressed multifamily. Do we think that's where some of these are? I'm thinking of things that are dumped, like it, it used to be dumped at the end of my street for a long time and now there's a driveway there and people are driving through there, so it doesn't happen as often. But it was mattresses at the dead end of LBJ. The street light helped too.
Oh, that's good. Um, it's from everywhere. It's not just from apartment complexes. Sometimes they'll go to a complex to dump just because there's a dumpster that doesn't have an enclosure that's locked next to it.
So this is just basically giving the opportunity for somebody to go and dump things, but if they're going to go dump it, it's up to us to still clean it up.
If they go and dump it. Well, if it's in an apartment complex, we don't clean up around an apartment complex. But this lets, I had, I did talk about this with one apartment manager and he was very excited because he would want, he's going to tell his tenants when they move out. This is your, this is where you take this. Do not drop it off at our, our dumpster. But a lot of the dumpsters around San Marcos that were built before, whenever we had the dumpster enclosure requirement, don't have dumpsters around them, I mean enclosures around them. And so people will just drive and find a dumpster and illegally dump next to it. So this just has an opportunity for them to be able to go and dispose of it responsibly.
It's, it's a lot of money and I can see how it's hard to explain.
And it's not the apartment management that's doing it, it's the residents that are?
Understood, but it's still that optics. And I understand that this is good, but I just, I'm wondering, well, if we're going to charge an extra dollar, should we just give it to that department itself in the city and see what kind of things can be done there or is it?
That's a question for Ms. Temides.
That dollar just to us for, um, so landfills don't want mattresses in them anymore because they're, they don't compress, they, they take up space and they're all working towards taking them out of putting them in landfills and they're charging a fee to do that. Being able to have a company come in and say they're going to recycle them and it, it's $12 to do two pieces, whereas if they went and took both of them, it would be $70 to Green Guy and that's cheap compared to the other landfills around us. I don't think we're going to see a, a whole lot of apartments in the beginning use it. I think it's going to be more of our residential because we do get a lot of mattresses called in for bulk pickup and they eat up a bulk pickup quickly. And they'll say, okay, I'm going to wait until the next year so I can get rid of this.
So it would be a bulk pickup for these, so an individual that's coming from, let's say Maxwell, is not going to be able to go to Green Guy and say, here's two or three mattresses because we're going to send it to San Marcos.
No, they would have to pay. They check the driver's license and the utility bill to make sure they are paying the recycle rate or the garbage rate for the city of San Marcos. This is, um, these, no cost, no fees are only to our customers because we hold that contract. Anybody outside of the city has to pay whatever the rate is for those items.
And again, this is to keep things out of the landfill so we can recycle.
And to help people not feel like they don't have an outlet. If they have to drive it all the way to TDS or New Braunfels to Waste Management in Mesquite Creek or even to the 130 Environmental Park, it's still farther than just driving to Green Guy and disposing of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Temides, you mentioned too that the city is going to be potentially be able to use some excess of this for some of our cleanups and?
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I'm going to support this.
Yes.
Because I think that is a, is a big deal on top of all the other positives to this. So I'm going to be in support of it.
When would it be in effect?
It would be in effect in July.
Okay, I have Mr. Gleason down as a yes and?
I'm a yes as well.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'm seeing yeses from Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott, and I am also a yes. So we're good with the, um, the questions that you have asked us and thank you for all the work that you do every day and looking ahead and getting more things added to these contracts. Truly keeping San Marcos beautiful.
Trying real hard.
And I'd love to give a shout out to Green Guy. You know, I'm very fortunate to live very close to them. I seem like, um, they're almost weekly and they do an amazing job for as busy as they are. They're a real asset to the community, so, and they're great partners from, from everything here. So, um, a real, a real shout out to Green Guy for their operations.
And just to add on that, you know, Green Guy is a great asset to our community. Amy, you're a great asset to our city. Your passion is clearly seen through your work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the original Green Guy people were great, new guy's great. And just to let people know, you can go shop there.
Yes.
And find metal. Terry shopped there and brought more of the house than he took when he was building stuff.
Yes.
So, you know, that's, it's a good place to go.
Yes, and we do actively work with code compliance as well. So if we do hear people who say they have a new mattress, we will contact them, code compliance, and ask if they're to contact that resident to say, hey, they have a new mattress. I know you're looking for some for the people you're assisting.
Right.
So we work with code compliances a lot as well, trying to make sure we're, we're helping to get resources where they belong. Plus with the reuse warehouse, we're doing the same thing.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to follow up on what you said, Mr. Prather, and that's that we are very fortunate to have Ms. Temides. She has, um, basically, I was talking to somebody earlier, saying how she has really formulated this program from the ground up, also Council, you know, for your support of the program and getting that. But definitely she's been our staff guru, has, who has really been able to be innovative, look for those hard-to-recycle items and get those things included in our contract and have some great partnerships with our providers. So just really want to give a shout out to Ms. Temides as well.
Always, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Cordova, item two.
Provide a staff update and hold discussion related to San Marcos Police Department's efforts to work with the community to reduce violent crime and on the department's effort to provide services to community members experiencing mental health issues.
Ms. Reyes. So our second presentation this afternoon is on the topic of crime reduction and our police department's effort to provide services to community members experiencing mental health issues. And this is an item that I actually requested. I, I know that we have our Criminal Justice Reform Committee that Council members Scott, Prior Tim Garza, and Mayor Houston are part of. And there's a lot of information that's been shared at that level with a lot of the mental health and diversion efforts that Chief Standridge and his team have been working on. So really thought it was really helpful for us to provide this, not only to the full Council, but also to our community members, who can really help to understand that there's a lot of effort that's going into trying to make sure that we're not criminalizing people who do have mental health issues and looking for different ways to approach those specific types of issues. So in 2023, our city experienced the first reduction in violent crime since 2014. That is welcome news and this can be attributed to greater community engagement, more public education, and a police department that has worked hard to implement intelligence-led policing and technology under Chief Standridge's leadership. Today's presentation will provide an in-depth review of 2023, highlighting new programs as well as advances in technology staffing and a specific focus on mental health services provided to our, to our community members. In addition to thanking Chief Standridge for his innovative approach to reducing crime, I also want to acknowledge the members of our police department for their dedication to carrying out this vision and City Council who has provided the resources to support them. I'm now going to turn it over to Chief Standridge to provide the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Stan Standridge, please chief. Good afternoon and welcome. I like following Amy Temides because she brings a lot of positive energy and I want to sustain that positive energy. So can we go ahead and start the presentation? It automatically does it? All right, good deal. All right, so we're going to do a year-end review as it relates to 2023. My objective is to discuss community, accountability, wellness, and resiliency. Resiliency is often defined as the ability to bounce back. I think that's actually a deficient definition. Resiliency is better defined as the ability to bounce back to a new normal. Because whatever you're returning to has changed substantively, especially if it relates to trauma. We'll talk about staffing, training, crime, investigations, and then we'll talk about mental health and SNPD as it relates to raising the bar for our citizens. Before I begin, if you will notice, there we have quite a few, uh, police leadership, leaders in this room. They represent our command staff, so I greatly appreciate our command staff being here. This report, all of this work is reflective of their leadership, way more so than mine. So I'm very appreciative that the command staff attends today, also appreciative of my bride. Beth is here with us today because if you get me, you get her and we're definitely in this together. And also want to introduce somebody special, Kamaya Taylor. Kamaya is our first, to my knowledge, public safety communications specialist and she will be under the leadership of Lauren Surly and Nadine Bonowitz. I'm not sure if I even know her new name, but y'all can clarify that. Nadine was recently married. But I want, if I can, just have Kamaya up and briefly introduce herself because I want you to know her, but, because she's going to be working with myself and Chief Stevens in emergency management, neighborhood enhancement. And so Kamaya, come on up.
Hello, everyone. How are we doing today?
Doing great.
Okay, just wanted to check in. Um, so I am Kamaya Taylor. I am the Public Safety Communications Specialist here at the city and I come from the food bank where I harbored a lot of good wholesome relationships with a diverse community and really got to know the community in that capacity. So I, with this new role, I do plan on continuing to harbor these relationships with the community and I have a few goals and that is to foster, um, and improve support in our communications, our transparency and our trust. And I look forward to any opportunities and challenges that come my way in that aspect.
So Lauren and I appreciate the budget consideration to make her position possible. I think she's going to be a force multiplier because I'm convinced that crime prevention needs to be rooted in education. And so she's going to be an integral piece for moving forward. Also want to recognize several members of our chief's advisory panel. Barbara Soseo, I have Stephanie Korcheck, I have Mr. James Bryant here. There may be others, but if you three, you are the newest member. Amy McAllister. Amy McAllister, I should know that because I'm a customer for Allen. Raise your hand so they know who you are. They're with the chief's advisory panel. They have literally just begun to blossom. They want to do so much more. And here's what I want to say. They want to advocate on behalf of our citizens. So if you need, uh, maybe perhaps an ombudsman, if you need an ambassador, if you need somebody to present your interest to the police department, maybe because worst-case scenario, it's fallen on deaf ears, please reach out to members of the chief's advisory panel. We actually have an email set up. You can directly contact them and they in turn will contact with us, make contact with us so we can remedy the issue. So to my members of the chief's advisory panel, thank you for being friends. All right, we're going to talk about community engagement first. That is really difficult to see. We took part in or led 99 community events, which translates to over 25,000 community contacts. Joe, I appreciate you. I will pay you later. Tammy, raise your hand. Charlotte here. I don't see Charlotte Lund here. Tammy, Charlotte, Eric Charles will. They took ownership of our first ever public safety trunk or treat. I say public safety because it was police, it was fire, it was emergency management, it was EMS. We brought everybody out. It was such a remarkable success that in spite of spending thousands of dollars of candy, we had to go buy more candy. I know many of you were there because I saw you, so thank you for making that a success. We also celebrated the 51st annual Blue Santa. I think you have a piece of history across the state of Texas to say that you have had 51 years of Blue Santa. That is phenomenal. And so we talked earlier, Ms. Reyes talked earlier about my leadership. My leadership is built on Chase's leadership, on Bob's leadership, on Brandon's leadership. There's been a remarkable leadership legacy throughout this department, and so I'm convinced that we're just going to continue to grow and get even better. Community in action. In 2017, SNPD welcomed its first volunteer. I want to clarify that, because if you read that, you think, well, you mean there were no volunteers prior to 2017. The police department was actually very inventive, and they came up with the idea that they wanted to have volunteers in policing, a VIP program, and they wanted it to be under the stewardship of a full-time employee. That is Charlotte Lund. Most of you know Charlotte Lund. So under her leadership, as an example, last year alone, we have over 60 active volunteers contributing over 4,316 hours. That is remarkable. I don't know many, and trust me, I teach all across the state. I taught 99 Texas chiefs yesterday. I teach all over the state. You actually have a pretty special program here. I want you to recognize that. Let that really marinate. The Volunteers in Policing is a very robust program, saving you 4,000-plus hours of what otherwise would be staff time. Huge shout out to Charlotte, huge shout out to you previous chiefs for having the inventive attitude towards that and coming up with something creative. In 2023, we moved forward after many conversations with the San Marcos Central Independent School District Board of Trustees to approve school marshals. The truth is, regardless of how many of us want a peace officer on every campus, this is just so cost prohibitive, plus finding those peace officers is difficult. So I think the next best plan is the school marshal program, and I'm happy to report that after a lot of extensive work, they now have a school marshal on each elementary campus. We in turn cover the middle school and middle schools and high school. So, good news for community safety. We need to continue to invest in school safety. On that note, Chief Stapp came to us last year and said, I would like, I have a vision, I would like to have some type of an integrated annual active attack exercise. So Chief Stevens, myself, Rob Fitch, the emergency manager coordinator, we all sat down, we talked about that. That is moving forward in June. So to my knowledge, we will have our first large-scale active attack exercise in San Marcos. Chase, thank you for your leadership for getting that done. We just had another meeting this morning to finalize some of those details. It's going to be a remarkable learning curve. We also enlisted the school district, so the school district, the marshal's office, and under Chief Marshal Jade Huffman and his leadership, they're going to all be part of that. You all, well, some of you know this, in 2023, we onboarded a qualified mental health professional, what's called a QMHP. This is typically, and in our case, it is a master's-level social worker, and they, she, Kelly rides in the unit with the mental health unit, and they became a, they become a co-responder unit. So you have a peace officer on scene, but you have a licensed clinician, a QMHP, right there with the peace officer. The value to that is case management and case access. Kelly has access to their system, we have access to our system, so we're going to make a better decision out there in the field. I'm going to just cast a vision. I would like to say within the next two years, we also add community paramedicine. Chief Stevens, we also add community paramedicine. I would love to see some aspect of community paramedicine in the vehicle, so that you have medicine, you have scene safety, and you have mental health, and you're making timely decisions right then, versus having to wait on MCO, Mobile Crisis Outreach Team, or go to the hospital where you consume tens of thousands of dollars in expenses. So, we're going to continue to press forward into that. This was, I actually stole this from a North Texas agency. One of my good friends, Chief Jimmy Perdue at North Richland Hills, he told me about a program wherein he had citizens who were full-time employees providing frontline services that did not necessitate a gun-toting cop. And I know that this council has said that you would like to see us decriminalize more, you would like to see us utilize civilians more. So, in that vein, we took their policy, and I gave it to Assistant Chief Brandon Winkenwerter, and he in turn worked with Commander Sam Myers and Commander Tiffany Williams, all three are in the audience today, and they went to work, and they took a piece of paper, a policy, and they made it a reality. You then gave us the budget to make it possible. You now have five full-time civilians who are the front end of all report-taking that does not necessitate a peace officer. Case in point, anytime you're filing something for insurance purposes, you have a car burglary, there's not a suspect on scene, there's not a suspect in custody. We are now sending civilians to those calls. Every time we send a civilian to that call, you keep the peace officer available to combat violent crime. Oh, by the way, did I share, quick note, we had a 30% reduction in violent crime. It's working. What we are doing, and when I say we, I say council, city manager's office, the police department, and the citizens, what we are doing is working. We're doing it with specific emphasis. There's what I'll call intentionality behind what we do. The PSSs, under Brandon and Commander Rich Mazanin, he now oversees them, under their leadership, they are thriving. Here's where I want to go with this one. Eventually, I want to see a sixth added, so we have a civilian supervisor supervising the civilians, so that I can keep my sworn doing sworn things, but we'll get there. All right, accountability needs to be a bedrock of our chosen profession. In 2023, the San Marcos Police Department Event Review Board reviewed 81 incidents, including crashes, uses of force, pursuits, and significant injuries. So the event review board is something that we started in 2021 to ensure that we had timely reviews on a monthly basis, and that we had reviews by an impartial audience. So it's comprised of a couple of officers, a couple of supervisors, and then Commander Tiffany Williams chairs it, Commander Sam Myers is co-chair, and we have the City of San Marcos Risk Management sitting there as well. They review every, underline every, that means all, crashes, pursuits, uses of force, and any significant injuries or events. What are they looking for? Is there a training deficiency? Is there a policy deficiency? Is there something to be commended? What did we do well? Or is there something to be fixed? So does it warrant type of corrective action or discipline? They are reviewing all of those, and you can see that they were busy in 2023, reviewing 81 of those incidents. Of the 81, we only had five internal investigations. I'm proud to report that for an agency our size, that tells me that we have instituted a culture of accountability. We're there. We're going to continue to improve it. In 2023, we had over 50,000 citizen contacts, and those were basically calls for service, of which we had 60 use-of-force incidents. And I hope you can see that screen, because I certainly cannot, but we had 60 incidents, and it gives you the breakdown. You can see the predominant use of force remains the taser. I researched it a bit further, more specifically Martha Chumchow, our analyst, researched it a bit further, and she said, the primary reason the officers are using force is in the process of trying to affect a lawful arrest, that people are resisting. So, if you consider the numbers, 60 out of over 50,000, I think you will find that we have a very conservative culture on use of force. We have even more conservative culture associated with pursuits. We had seven pursuits last year, which was two less than 2022. 29% of those pursuits were aborted. We preach a lot internally about need versus risk. If the risk outweighs the need to apprehend the offender, then we abort the pursuit. 71% of the pursuits were kept within 10 miles, two pursuits involved alcohol and/or drugs, and zero pursuits caused injury in 2023. We had 57 reported personal injuries. The most, this is where we were injured in the process of policing in San Marcos in 2023. There were 57 instances of personal injuries. Most were associated with joint trauma and pain, or impact trauma and pain, and then we had several smoke and chemical inhalations. The injuries were most likely caused by calls for service, which were accounted for 33%, or arresting a resisting subject, 33%. Crashes, something that we paid close attention to. In 2023, we had 45 fleet crashes while driving 2 million miles in 2023. How many of you can brag about driving 2 million miles last year? So when you look at 45 years, you know, that's a whole lot of crashes, but when you look at 2 million miles, everything suddenly becomes a point of perspective. This means we average one crash every 42,000 miles. However, 18 of those were preventable, and 27 were non-preventable. What does that mean? Only 18 times were we in violation of something, and I can tell you, it's typically us backing up. For whatever reason, those tall lights that stand 25 feet high hide very well. I'll just leave it at that. Maybe all of us have had that experience. Four were deer strikes. I would know because my personal truck took on a deer and lost. So since 2021, preventable crashes have remained steady in frequency. We haven't seen an aberration as it relates to the numbers. Wellness and resiliency. The chaplain, Chaplain Mike Hallifield, please note that we only have one chaplain now. We recognized, oh, his name just escaped me. What? Latham, Jeff Latham. We recognize, Chaplain Jeff Latham, pastor, he's a pastor, I don't want to call him a pastor, we recognized him at our awards ceremony last month, Chief Stevens and I did, and we recognized him for five-plus years of service to the San Marcos Police Department. I think he continues as the fire department chaplain, and we are moving full force with Mike Hallifield, and we're getting a lot of use out of that guy. I think the world of our police chaplain. You all know him, because he's offered invocations many times. We gave you some quick statistics, 21 invocations, 15 hospital visits, 16 community events, three weddings and/plus funerals. Now, I want to spend just a minute here, when we say funerals and we put it in the category of weddings, that seems a little unorthodox. We had one wedding, we had two funerals. Beth and I just attended a funeral last Monday. I will quickly tell you that, to me, a funeral is a celebration of life. And so, I think our chaplain does a really good job of doing celebrations of life, but he did one wedding and two celebrations of life. And he was involved, I don't know what to level, hopefully just in support, with nine babies. This verbiage I actually learned from my bride. You all know that Beth was the chaplain for the police department, and eventually the whole city of Abilene, and she talked about, what is her predominant job? It was a ministry of presence. That's what Chaplain Mike offers. He offers a ministry of presence. He does not evangelize, he does not proselytize. He provides a ministry of presence. He will sit with you, he will be quiet, he will ask questions, he will connect you to resources. That's what your chaplain is doing, and folks, he's doing it on a full-time basis. Is he here?
He's in the lobby.
All right, good. He can pay me later. All right, resiliency. This is from Dr. Tanya Glenn. It's an actual quote, I'll read it for the benefit of our citizens at home. "With crime trends and staffing levels, first responders primarily sought ongoing services for managing day-to-day events while dealing with cumulative stress, burnout realities impacting their professional and personal lives. I couldn't say it any better. The problem with life is it's so daily." We typically think of the profession of law enforcement or fire protection about the big events. The issue is, a typical peace officer will be exposed to 187 critical incidents in their life of their career, 187 critical incidents. So what Tanya recognizes, what Chaplain Mike Hallifield recognizes, is it's the cumulative stress that if it goes unabated, if it goes untreated, can have significant effects. So, you all care enough about your peace officers and firefighters, this goes both ways, that we provide professional psychological services through Dr. Tanya Glenn, and she's on contract. She saw 20 of our employees, your employees, providing 87 therapy hours. You don't have a clue how much money you possibly save because of that investment right there. That's huge. I want you to think about, in 2023, when did we read about the headlines, something going horribly wrong associated with policing in San Marcos? Folks, that's a testament that what we're doing is working. So, she also provided eight academy training hours where she's coming in-house, and she's talking and unpacking trauma, and making sure that she understands, everybody understands how to recognize it, and then how to ultimately obey it. Awards and recognitions, we just did this recently, and I appreciate several of you being there. We issued two police commendation medals, 11 lifesaving medals, 70 distinguished service awards. Sheila, is this probably the most awards we've ever given? Sheila says, as long as she's been on the committee, this is the most awards we've ever given out. And we also gave out four community partnership awards. We recognize the judges, because sometimes when you call judges, you get no response. That is not the case with the two listed on your screen. Judge John Burns and Judge Maggie Moreno are incredibly responsive. We also recognize Kissing Tree, Backs Are Blue, they continue to be huge community supporters, and we recognize San Marcos Toyota. We use San Marcos Toyota because they do this across the United States, specifically in Texas, where they allow us to use their used cars for covert reasons. It's a phenomenal program. I'm sure it costs them a whole lot, it costs you almost nothing to do this program, so we recognize Toyota for the obvious reasons. Let's talk about staffing. Alex Adams, Kyle Bean, if you're in the audience, stand up. These are your two newest peace officers. They were just sworn in this morning. Alex comes to you from Sugar Land, raise your hand, Alex. Kyle comes to you from Texarkana, Texas side. So we swore them in this morning. Y'all can have a seat.
I'm pretty sure I saw him as a part of the protest.
No comments from the gallery, Chief Stevens, no comments from the gallery. Commander Lee Leonard, raise your hand. Commander Lee Leonard oversees our recruiting, our hiring, does an exceptional job with this. It's a full-time job plus some. In 2023, we onboarded 31 new employees. We onboarded a crime analyst, they're in training, or they would be here, yeah, they're still in training, they're undergoing GSS training right now, GIS training. We onboarded four police service specialists, two crime scene investigators. Oh, by the way, I don't know if y'all realize that, but we've grown crime scene by one additional investigator because of the response to violent crime, and then one record specialist. Sworn staff, Lee's been busy, he's brought on five cadets, nine lateral officers and two police assistants. Dispatch, Audrey Verver is outside the room in the lobby. Audrey, she's right there, she's exceptional. We could not do it without Audrey overseeing dispatch and records, so thank you, Audrey. She onboarded seven telecommunications. So, quick update, you would look at this and say, finally, SNPD is fully staffed. Why are y'all laughing? SNPD is getting close to fully staffed. I'm just going to, here's the headlines, I hope tomorrow. SNPD will be fully staffed in 2024, exclamation point. That's our goal. Where are we now? We have four actual vacancies on the sworn side. Okay, that's not bad. If you look at departments our size across the nation, to be at four, we're actually a pretty good place. Here's the other issue, four plus 17 functional, so we're actually 21 short, which is 17% of our workforce. So what does that mean? We're working day-to-day without 17% of our sworn workforce. When I say we have 17 functional vacancies, that means we have hired replacements, but they're somewhere in a pipeline. We have four in the field training program. We have eight in a mini academy that actually starts March 18. Mini academy, eight going to mini academy, and we have five out on FMLA. Remember all those babies? It's a two-head sword, FMLA. So we have five out on FMLA. So we are 17% short on the sworn side. On the TCO side, telecommunications, I hate to use acronyms, on the telecommunications, our dispatchers, we are, we have four actual vacancies, and we have one frozen position, which we're going to seek to unfreeze with the upcoming budget. position, which we're gonna seek to unfreeze with the upcoming budget. This Friday at three P M, Tammy, three P M? This Friday at three P M, we will have a badge pinning for our five newest who all will take the test Thursday or Friday morning? Thursday morning. They will take the state license exam thirty, uh, Thursday morning. I pray that we pin all five. It's a tough test. They passed, every one of them passed their local academy at Capcom. Now they have to pass the state. We will pin those five this Friday at three o'clock. I hope to see all of you there. We will also promote two people. We will promote Vince Fisher to the rank of sergeant and we will promote Dylan Anderson to the rank of corporal. And you'll learn a little bit more about Alex and Kyle and hopefully their brides. This was interesting. If only I could read it. Luckily, it's in front of you. Um, this, I think, was Tammy Strachus's idea. She actually asked, hey, why, why did you consider San Marcos Police Department? In fact, I asked this of, uh, Kyle and Alex this morning, why us? And these are some of the comments. If you have time, please go back and read these. It tells you why these employees are choosing our city. I think it's actually really good, I don't wanna call it data, but I, basically that is, that's what's supporting why people are coming here. Training. Uh, Sergeant Aaron Clul, I don't know if he's out there, had a banner year under his leadership and with Officer Brian Ellison. Those two are the two that are assigned to the training unit full-time. As you can see, they had a one hundred and three percent increase in training in twenty twenty-three. So we had two hundred and eighty-two classes with two thousand eight hundred and twenty-two students. Obviously, those are not all just internal. And we had twenty thousand three hundred and thirty-eight hours of training for a hundred and three, hundred and three percent increase, which is phenomenal. And you can see some of the classes that we offered. Communicating with the deaf, collision investigations, youth mental health, K and I and patrol, juvenile procedures, team of character, civil service and discipline, and mastering de-escalation. Those are just a few. Crime. In twenty twenty-three, the call center, I referenced Audrey earlier, her call center reported one hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one calls came into the nine-one-one dispatch center. Of those, we created fifty-one thousand one hundred and forty-seven call sheets that necessitated some type of response, follow-through consideration. The good news is that's a seventeen percent decrease from twenty twenty-two. Fifty-eight percent of the incidents were community initiated. What does that mean? That means that the citizens continue to call the San Marcos Police Department, which I would submit to you is evidence of community trust. They're not gonna call if there's not a high level of trust. You can see that the top five reported incidents in twenty twenty-three were, and oh, by the way, they were also the top five in twenty twenty-two. Traffic stops, nine thousand eight hundred and six, citizen assist or service calls. Then you had assaults. We had thirty-four hundred incidents of assaults. We had two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight crashes. And then we had two thousand nine hundred and thirty-one incidents of suspicious activity. This equates to three hundred and sixty-six calls a day. I could not do their job. One in thirty-six people were reportedly a victim of crime in twenty twenty-three. So overall, the aggregate crime was down approximately fifteen percent from twenty twenty-two. Despite this reduction, the crime trend overall still remained the same roughly, meaning the high numbers we saw in simple assaults were still simple assaults, high top five, thefts, still top five. So the types of crime we're dealing with remain steady. The amount we're dealing with finally dropped. And this is the big slide right here. San Marcos saw its first major dip in violent crime since two thousand and fourteen. That is the headline. That is an effort of the community. Community education, Kamia, I'm excited about what you're gonna do for us to take that even a step further. That is purposeful staffing increases by you all. Thank you for that. Assistance from our community, they're still talking, they're still calling, we're still getting Crime Stoppers tips. We're still solving significant amount of crimes because of Crime Stoppers, because people are still calling. So as we continue to do intentional-led policing, as Ms. Reyes said, I think we're gonna have an even better year in twenty twenty-four. However, let me provide a caveat. The police department is not responsible for the reduction in crime. The police department equally cannot be responsible for an increase in crime. We would all have to agree that crime is socio-economically driven. So here's good news. Uh, Sergeant Dwayne Poorboy, you here? Raise your hand. Alright. We have talked internally about having a very specific codified plan to reduce violent crime in San Marcos. We started it, y'all probably remember that, that V C C R, the really weird acronym, violent crime something reduction, I don't even remember what, it's no longer that. Sergeant Poorboy said, hey, I wanna take another stab at this. So this week, this Thursday, is the inaugural meeting for a group of committed stakeholders to actually identify a very specific comprehensive reduction from a social sciences perspective. The members will include Sergeant Poorboy, Patty Hom, y'all know her, she's our analyst, Shanna O'Brien. Shanna is a game changer. We're collaborating with her and Greg Carr and his team more so than ever. Uh, Commander Tiffany Williams, Stephanie Gorchek with her chief advisory panel, Griselle Pedescarri. We all know her. She is our D E I, diversity, equity and inclusion coordinator. Kamia Taylor, our new communications. Dr. Lucia Summers, she worked in mental health before getting her PhD in England. Barbara Sacedo, Barbara, raise your hand, also a member of our chief's advisory panel. I then have a member with lived experience. Not gonna identify her by name, um, because of the lived experience, but I will share that one son was arrested for capital murder. Another son was involved in a drive-by and he's about to be released from prison on probation. So Councilwoman Garza, shout out to you. We have somebody with lived experience that's gonna help form our crime reduction plan. Oh, come on. Dr. Scott Bowman, he teaches race and criminal justice at Texas State. He's involved with lots of university activities outside of criminal justice and he's a qualitative researcher. And then you have Dr. James Bishop. He is with the Texas State Department of Health and Human Performance. If you've seen what Dallas has done and San Antonio is trying to replicate what Dallas has done, is they looked at it from a community, public education perspective. How do you go after crime? Recognizing crime is really not uh, rooted in criminology. It's rooted in employment, education, poverty, all of those factors. So Sergeant Poorboy, under your leadership, we're looking forward to what you're gonna come up with. Alright. Property crime was down by eleven percent from twenty twenty-two. Bad news is, we're still having an average of four cars stolen per week. Specific vehicles that are being stolen? Pickups, Hyundai's. Fords, a lot of F two-fifties and Hyundai's are being targeted. Most of them are on the I thirty-five corridor. And most of them head south almost immediately. Investigations, Commander Eric Spiegel, raise your hand. Is he here? He's back there. Commander Eric Spiegel oversees investigations for CID, couple of new things on its way. We are gonna stand up a special investigations unit. Y'all have heard us call it V I C A T, Violent Criminal Apprehension Team. We're getting away from V I C A T. We're gonna just call it S I U, Special Investigations Unit. Sergeant Poorboy oversees the S I U and we already have three named detectives working S I U. They are gonna work your major violent cases. Commander Spiegel has the vision of also staffing a S V U. You will recognize the acronym from television, Special Victims Unit. Our Special Victims Unit will be comprised of juvenile crime, sexual assaults and crimes against children. Those are very nuanced in the law and they're very nuanced as it relates to victim-informed care. So we're gonna stand up a specialized S V U. We are leveraging technology. Uh, just since I've been here, we've spent over four million dollars in technology. Chief Winkenwerter will probably go down in the record books as having spent the most amount of technology at about three point four million? Three point six? He's an expensive assistant chief because he brought forward basically game-changing technology. And then we have Flock, we have CloudGavel, we have Celbright, we have Fuses. Uh, Kamia is going to help us do an actual marketing campaign associated with Fuses. What is it? How does it benefit my business? How does it benefit my hotel? How does it benefit me as a, a citizen? All of those things Kamia is gonna help answer from a community-centric perspective. We're gonna try to boil down the technology to a user-friendly understanding so that we can leverage technology to combat crime. I gave you a couple of significant cases. August twenty twenty-three, three people were reported they'd been kidnapped and held for ransom for a short period of time. Patrol, CID and narcotics worked together for months to complete a very in-depth investigation that revealed three San Marcos residents had been involved in trafficking people into the United States from Mexico. At times, they would also kidnap the smuggled persons and hold them for ransom from their families. More specifically, they shot up the van that they were in, drove them off the road and then put them in a different vehicle at gunpoint. This culminated in CID, narcotics, crime scene investigations and both the Hayes County SWAT and DPS SWAT teams serving three search warrants served simultaneously on residents in San Marcos and Hayes County. Detectives were able to make three arrests of the offenders who showed a strong propensity to violence and no regard for human life. And this was not the first time they had done this. So those were very good arrests. The other one, very unique, very tragic. This one just occurred in November of twenty twenty-three. A distressed caller reported his throat was slit and that he needed assistance at a local motel. The San Marcos Police Department Patrol Officers, detectives and crime scene investigators responded and documented the gruesome crime scene. What followed was an intricate investigation that revealed the caller was complicit in online solicitation of a minor in possession of child pornography and had committed sexual assault of a child in other jurisdictions. The young man who slit the man's throat contacted his parents just after committing this act and remained in contact with them while he returned home to the Dallas area. CID coordinated with the parents to safely take him into custody at his home. The caller whose throat was slit was arrested and formally charged for his offense. So why San Marcos? It was middle ground. The victim, ultimately determined to be offender, lives south. The young man who actually did the throat slicing lived in the Dallas area. They agreed mutually to meet halfway. San Marcos, I thirty-five corridor was halfway. When the young man slit his throat, believing he was deceased, leaves, calls dad, goes to Dallas County. The person whose throat was slit is eventually able to get free and then ultimately that's what summoned us. Horrific crime scene. Lots of crimes. Cause think about it, the offender who came from the south was involved in all kinds of things and the young man who did the throat slicing believed that he had also been victimized. So your detectives, your patrol officers, your C S I, we're all dealing with these types of offenses in twenty twenty-three. So let's finish on this note, mental health. There are, I really wouldn't even say early discussions, we're a little further along. Just this week, I sent out a request to the behavioral advisory team. So let me back up for the benefit of our citizens. If we want to do different as it relates to mental health services in our city and our county, then we need to ask, what does different look like? And we need to form a leadership collaborative across all of these systems who will agree to come together and work toward difference. That's what we did. We actually did that in twenty twenty-two. Going into, we codified it in, I think, May of twenty twenty-three, we created the BAT, Behavioral Advisory Team. The Behavioral Advisory Team has met every month on the first Wednesday of each month. Uh, Chase Staff is in there. I chaired the thing along with Judge Elaine Brown with the Mental Health Court. And we have been pressing into different for San Marcos and Hayes County. It's now blossoming. We've seen some very early successes. Now the next step is, we wanna create this mental health coordinating committee. It will exist to support the three subcommittees above it. The BAT will have a criminal justice focus. I will still chair the BAT because I represent criminal justice. There will now be a youth mental health services and there will be an adult mental health services. We had the kickoff meeting for the stakeholders for those two additional committees. Now what we need to do is we need to come to the governing entities and ask you, what member is gonna represent the city of San Marcos? Kyle, Dripping Springs, Wimberly, local, uh, mental health associate, what member is gonna represent you in the M H C C, Mental Health Coordinating Committee? Mayor, you'll probably get that letter for request probably as early as next week, maybe at the end of this week. We envision fifteen people on the mental health coordinating committee. We wanna go after mental health as it relates to homelessness, as it relates to youth, as it relates to pre-incarceration. We wanna find least harm solutions. Folks, there's a ton of work ahead of us. And so we're gonna ask for each governing entity to designate somebody who will come together on a monthly basis, not miss meetings. The charter will specify if you miss the meetings, we're gonna remove you and ask for somebody else to attend. And that person would attend these meetings and work to support the functioning of those three subcommittees. I'm excited about what lies ahead of us in twenty twenty-four. The behavioral advisory team specifically, remember, we've been meeting since May of twenty twenty-three. We received a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the county to assist. This is a big one. We are collaborating, collaborating with Evoke Wellness for a drop-off center. The county has earmarked forty-five thousand. You all have verbally earmarked in your visiting session, fifty thousand. What's the goal? If we have a person experiencing a serious mental illness and the PD takes custody of that person, we can take him to jail, we can take him to Evoke Wellness and drop him off. Which one's preferable? We would rather take the least harm solution and not put somebody who has a serious mental illness in jail. But right now jails across the nation are the de facto treatment providers for mental health. We wanna change that in San Marcos. So Evoke Wellness stepped up and said, we wanna be a part of this. They're also giving us five free scholarships. What does that mean? That means five people could be brought to them at no cost to the county or the city. We also need Kyle, Buta and the other entities to contribute money to make this happen. So more to come with Evoke Wellness. Hill Country hired a forensic director to monitor competency restoration waitlist. This was a direct benefit of the BAT talking about competency restoration. Most people don't have a clue what that means. That means if Stan Standards gets arrested, he's charged with the crime and I go to county jail. But I suffer from schizophrenia. I am probably not legally competent. So it's a court process. The court will decide he is not legally competent to stand trial. I then enter a waitlist, a competency restoration waitlist, waiting to go to a state hospital like ASH, Austin State Hospital. The wait, when we started this work, was between one and two years. That means Stan Standards languishes in your jail, waiting for competency restoration services. So we started talking about this internally and said, wait, that, nobody's okay with that. Kelly Higgins, your elected district attorney is not okay with that. Everybody in the room said, what are we gonna do about it? Hayes County said, you know what, we're gonna hire, a correctional Hayes County, local mental health authority said, we're gonna hire somebody whose job it is to monitor that, find those beds and get them out of jail and to competency we're going to hire somebody whose job it is to monitor that, find those beds and get them out of jail and to competency restoration. Lots happening there. I don't have enough time to explain this sixteen twenty two, but that's a mental health evaluation that persons with serious mental illness undergo in jail. Uh, we added Councilman Prather to the Behavioral Advisory Team. We also added the Hayes County Health Director, Matthew Gonzalez. Oh, by the way, that's a brand new position. We applaud the county, county's taking this serious. And now they're going to hire a new behavioral health coordinator. This coordinator will be housed at the uh, Hayes County Health Department and they're going to help coordinate resources across the county as it relates to mental health services. So a lot of good things happening on mental health. We want to stop sending police in response to some nine one one calls. So Audrey, she has been given the policy from Abilene. In Abilene, we became the first city in Texas to adopt telehealth services at time of nine one one at no cost to the city. I want to replicate that here. So what does that mean? That means Councilman Shane Scott, you have an adult son who's in crisis. You call the PD. The PD has a decision-making tree. Has your son committed a crime? No. We're going to call Avell Crisis Services, they're located in Corpus. We're going to do a warm handoff with a licensed clinician on the other end. You're going to talk to them and the nine one one is going to step out and we're not going to send cops to your address. We need this done. I've given Audrey to try to have it working by April. She gave me a thumbs up. So I would like to have Avell Crisis Services operational in your city in April and it's not going to cost you a penny. We're going to ride the contract coattails of our local mental health authority, Hill Country. Coming soon. That's all that says. Last thing, we have created the first ever BTAG Behavioral Threat Assessment Group. Right now the school districts are required by Senate Bill one eleven to do a behavioral threat assessment when a child is homicidal or suicidal. No such trigger exists for adult population. So if we have an adult who posts homicidal threats, unless they're imminent, we don't typically arrest them. The law requires that they be imminent. So what we have said is, wait a minute, this is ridiculous. We can do a behavioral threat assessment for a kid, a juvie, but we can't do it for an adult? Let's change it. So about twelve months ago, I called for a meeting of all my agency leaders and I said, hey, guys, this is Stan's vision. You can say no, what do you think? Every one of them said, that's a good idea, let's do it. So we met in Kyle's Taj Mahal, what they call the police department. We met there at that police department. We had this interest meeting, everybody got on board. You now have an operational behavioral threat assessment group. They meet every two weeks or as often as needed and they assess people like Stan Standridge who is out there, who's a known threat to life. If I'm a high, they have to make contact in twenty four hours. They're either going to make a decision on an arrest or they can do an emergency detention order. If they do an arrest, they're going to do bond conditions with GPS monitoring. They're going to do something to keep the community safe from me. So the BTAG is now operational and meeting and doing that. That's everything I just said. This is the, these are our partners. You can see it's Kyle, Buta, University, Hayes County District Attorney's Office, Judicial Services, used to be known as Pre-Trial Services, Juvenile Probation, School Districts, Hill Country and DPS, Department of Public Safety. I'm done.
Mr. Prather?
Um, I, I don't have any questions, but chief, fantastic. Um, we're moving in the right direction. I remember one, I feel like it was about two years ago, you gave us a similar presentation. At that time, violent crime had risen fifty percent. Don't quote me on the exact numbers, but it was around fifty percent. And here we are talking about a reduction by crime by thirty percent. So fantastic news. Great job, chief, great job, S and PD and the whole team for making that happen. Um, that last presentation you gave us, you laid out a strategy, a serious game plan. Uh, I heard you mention earlier about intentionally led policing. You know, like, how do we utilizing technology techniques, um, community outreach, you know, whole, the whole gambit. Um, this thirty to fifty percent reduction, this isn't a fluke. This is success and um, I'm just, you know, thank you. Um, a couple of things that, you know, I want to make sure that we're emphasizing uh, uh, preventing resilience and burnout with our officers and um, great work from the chaplain. Uh, I always say mental health and spiritual health are, are linked and sometimes it's, it's just about listening. Um, or walk a trail, go to church, go fishing, you know, what, what, what do you need to do to help our officers um, prevent uh, burnout and so they're a resilient force. But um, look, momentum builds on momentum. And um, if there's anything that we can be doing as policymakers, as budget makers, um, to make sure that you're doing your job and S and PD is doing what we need to do to make sure our community is safe, you know? I'm on board, but fantastic presentation, great news, fantastic.
I appreciate even more the involvement you do with the citizens and the groups that you put together. Um, I went to school here as a CJ major and one of the things that stuck in my head was when my professor said that um, Arlington, Arlington police officers had to have a degree, you know, college degree to be even higher. It got me to thinking about how you think so much differently. I think you're bringing that to this department and the programs that you're putting together. Not necessarily have to go to college for that, but you're putting, having avenues where people can understand how that pays off, having the city involved. Um, I don't know if we're, when I was in school here, we did like uh, reserve officer stuff. I don't know if y'all do that.
Reserve officers? We have, and Mayor asked this question via email. We have what's called um, police temporary employees. I hate that phrase, but it's an HR phrase. Uh, you're looking at an exceptional one right there. Byron, raise your hand. I think the world of this guy. Byron is a police temp. He's an honorably retired S and PD employee who came back and we pay him at a, a level of salary in a part-time capacity. He can't work more than twenty nine hours in a given week. We pay him to do that. We pay Richie Prado to do uh, sex offender registry. We pay Kelly Minor to do iconic village fire investigation with Chief Stevens and uh, Chief Jonathan uh, Henderson.
Henderson, that guy.
I hate mentioning names because I always mess name. So we do a lot of that, but I don't have reserves. Here's the difference. A reserve program is where you take somebody who is fascinated with law enforcement, they have their police officer license and they want to go out and work the streets in a non-compensated capacity. I'm not that comfortable with that. This city is still pretty challenging in some ways. You saw some of the crimes that we were dealing with. I'm not there yet, so we don't do that.
Yeah, one of the, and I can understand that for sure. And one of the things that reminds me though is the involvement, as you said, somebody who wants to be in law enforcement. I think that's where also you have the ability to change the mindset of how officers, you know, become officers and the way that they think in the future, dealing with social issues, technology and all that stuff at the same time. So um, I appreciate everything you put together for us. It's been really good.
The only thing I would say in response to that, I want to go back to your first comment. Me coming here didn't, is not the catalyst. Me coming here, seeing the level of trauma your department has experienced, recognizing the trauma, articulating a pathway out of the trauma, because these folks are smart, in themselves. All we need to do is create a pathway out of the trauma. And then I ask a bunch of questions, they'll, they'll tell you that, I'm the question chief. I ask, what do, what can we do about that? They're the ones that are coming up with these ideas, the initiatives, the strategies. The only thing I'm really doing is I'm pushing mental health. Joe Osborne, are you in here? Kelly, raise your hand. Kelly, is our qualified mental health professional? I'm the one that's pushing the mental health and then I say, hey, y'all go to work. It's their bright ideas, it's not Stan Standridge. I don't want anybody to think it, this is all me, this is them.
No, we know that, but you're giving.
Thank you.
But you're giving the opportunity for them to flourish as officers and using their mind. So that's, that's leadership, so thank you.
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, first off, chief, thank you. Um, thank you for being here today. Thank you for representing our community. Um, I think a lot of the changes that we've seen in our community is because of your leadership. Yes, you don't do it all, but it starts at the top. Second off, thanks to the department itself. Um, has been through a lot and continue to do very good things after everything the department has been through. And uh, we cannot thank you and appreciate all you enough. And then to the volunteers, um, the police chiefs advisory board, all the organizations that have spent time for outreach. Yes, the, the trunk or treat was amazing. Blue, Blue Santa, all of those things make a real impact in our community. And so thank all, all of you, whether you're paid, volunteered for taking time and, and making a difference. And it's showing up in these things. You know, policing, criminal justice, society is complicated. And sometimes you have to get a little creative to try to find solutions. There's a lot of very good things in here. And uh, we are moving in the right direction and I think you're leading the state and nation in a lot of ways for some of these things. And it shows rural leadership and uh, cohesiveness in the, in apartment for following your lead and, and wanting to be a big part of that. So um, I can't thank you enough and to everyone who helps try to make this community safer. Um, it's a, it's, it's, it's a rough world out there. And uh, um, the people that have gone through things know that we're, we're trying to do the right thing and you guys are too. So um, just, I can't say thanks enough.
I too say thank you for the good news. Uh, and thanks to the department, the chief's panel and all others who are contributing to past and future successes. Uh, but thank you, chief, because it takes a catalyst to take somebody to, to initiate that and lead that change. I do have a couple of questions and I have to, that wasn't the question that I was asking about reserves. Um, as a graduate of the Citizen Police Academy, I think it was class B in nineteen ninety eight and as a founder of the Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association, I just want to acknowledge, I'm, I'm great with what you've got now for your volunteers and it's more formal and, and I think that's wonderful. But I do want to acknowledge that we've had volunteers for a number of years who have done warrant calling, um, Black Friday handicap tickets at the malls and, and picking up lead at the gun range. So we've had people doing that for a long time. I think the new program where it's a little more, more formal and structured, I think that's great. But I had to acknowledge some of my buddies from, from before.
Thank you, ma'am.
The uh, um, the, the five people that are helping public service.
PSS, right.
Do they work twenty-four seven or are they Monday through Friday, eight to five for the most part?
Uh, no and no. So they do not work twenty-four seven because there's only five of them. We need to grow that to six. Um, they, they typically will, will work a, a range because we're about to adjust some hours. So think from eight to eight. And we're also going to catch Sundays.
Okay.
Saturdays, we've done the actual data, we, Martha, Patty, they've done the data. Saturdays aren't actually supported. So it's my understanding, and Brandon just walked out of the room. It's my understanding we're going to implement Sundays as well as Monday through Friday. And we're going to try to have coverage from eight A to AP.
Okay, uh, that's great. And under the sworn list, it had two police assistants?
That's like Byron, we brought on two more. We brought on Richie to do sex offender registries and we brought on Kelly Minor for the iconic village fire.
I know he has special title Byron, I'll, I'll remember that. Um, but still, thank you for, for the reporting. You have been giving a lot of the information to the uh, Criminal Justice Reform Committee. And remember I kept saying, we need to tell everybody about this. So now we have.
Thank you, ma'am.
So thank you very much.
Thank you all for the opportunity.
And counsel, there's no decision points here. We were just getting an update and good news, so thank you very much.
I, I do want to acknowledge Chief Standridge. I know he's very humble and, and, and saying, uh, hey, everybody else. And I know that it takes everybody to, to work, but having some vision and having the support also makes a difference. Also want to acknowledge um, Chase Staff. I know this is the second to last meeting and so I know that there's been a lot of work um, to, to try to get us here. So just really want to thank everybody and, and really just want to say, I know that the department has been through a lot. We all know that the department's been through a lot. And so being able to see some of the pride that is able to be taken in these new directions, I think hopefully has been, you know, somewhat healing and fulfilling to be able to, to see that, that police work is looked at in a, a different way than maybe it has been in the past. So just want to thank all of you, thank you.
Thank y'all and upper management for the support. And I'm going to thank us, the council for the support that we've given and uh, some funding approval. So yeah, I mean, we should have cake for everyone. Maybe next time.
It, it, it does take everybody, mayor, so thank you.
So thank you.
Oh, sorry, because it's because the mayor had asked me earlier if I had a comment, but I didn't, but I do now. I just wanted to thank you, chief. Uh, this presentation, the content of this presentation has been given to us in pieces in the CJR committee. And so I appreciate it being open to the public so our neighbors can see it and engage in the conversation, provide a feedback.
All right, if there's nothing else, we will go to um, our next item, item three, Ms. Cordova. And we're, if y'all will just hang loose a minute because we're going to be going into executive session and then we all get to leave the room. So if you'll hang loose just a minute, thank you.
The city council will convene in executive session pursuant to the following section of the Texas Government Code. Section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding the process related to appeal of administrative determinations on the standards of installation of electric facilities. B, section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney and section five five one point zero seven, zero, seven two, real property regarding the lease of real property near the intersection of South Edward Gary Street and South LBJ Drive.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session. I heard a motion from Mr. Prather and a second from Mr. Gleason. Ms. Cordova?
Mr. Prather? Mr. Scott? Ms. Garza? Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Gleason? Mr. Mendoza?
All right, we'll go into executive session at four twenty eight. Counsel, I'll give you till four forty and we'll meet in the conference room.